Will comment on anything?
On the resolutions.
Will there be an appropriate amount of time given at the end of the meeting for public comment on other topics?
Well, as long as we don't, we have to be out of here by seven o'clock.
Oh, you didn't pay the bills.
I have no control over what they do in the legislature.
Sorry about that.
That's all I heard.
Do you miss those days? I asked them not to say that.
Really?
Okay, Council, roll call.
Fred Watanola.
Here.
Dave Gordon.
Here.
Charles Landy.
Here.
Jack Hayes.
Here.
Brian Devine is absent. Timothy Rose.
Here.
Kenneth Gilligan is here. Timothy DeGraff is not required. Charlie Whitaker.
Here.
Melinda France.
Here.
Pledge your allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the purpose of this public hearing tonight is on the two resolutions, 2246 or 2245. Let me read the resolutions. Okay, Resolution 2445 authorizing and approving the agency to discontinue servicing single-stream recyclables. And Resolution 2446 authorizing and approving the modification of the 2018 tipping fees and other charges. I'll accept the motion to open a public hearing. Motion made by David, seconded by Jack, all in favor, signed by saying aye. The public hearing is now open. If anyone wanted to sign up, please come up and sign up. We do have a list of people that have signed up already, and we're going to start with the list. So, Executive Director, you have the list? Oh, it's right here, okay. All right, first speaker, Jim Barfellow. We ask all the speakers to give your name and your address and the municipality that you're representing.
Chairman.
Yes, and because of the number of speakers, we're going to limit it to five minutes, and then we have time left, we'll have you, you can come back and speak again. We have to be out of here by seven o'clock, so we have a two-hour window to use this room this evening.
Jim Durfellow, Three Young Avenue, Marver, resident and member of the Transfer Station Committee. I work for Tim Miller Associates Environmental Planners out of Cold Spring. The Chinese have thrown down the gauntlet. The Board is proceeding in a fiscally responsible way. We, as Americans, must rise to the challenge. Rather than complain, come forth with ideas the Board and the staff can help turn into reality. Here is mine. Divide the municipality into four districts. Divide the hauling fleet into four groups. We'll call these trucks red, white, blue, for the colors of the flag, and brown for the pole that holds them aloft. District One's, Week One Driver takes a truck with the red decal and picks up the empty red wine bottles and other glass. District One's, Week Two Driver takes the white truck and picks up the paper. Week Three, the blue truck to pick up the water bottles, plastic, and cans. Week Four, the brown truck to pick up cardboard. District Two sees the white truck first, and so on. Different companies may be running the different colored trucks. Hallers have to clean out the single-stream recycled trucks, get new containers for the public. The public must find a place for these containers, sort recyclables, and put the right one out each week. Not hard compared to being shot in the jungles of Vietnam giving birth, being a Board member doing the right thing, and listening to all of us, getting agreement on what colors to use, and dealing with quadruple amounts of each sorted recycle recyclable material. We must be like Vikings who have lost the wind. It's time to row together, get strong together. I call for people to come up here and tell me a better direction to row, if they have one. God bless America.
Thank you.
Can I give you your copy?
Sure, absolutely. Okay, next one is Joanne Myers.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Joanne Myers, 56 at Beale Street, Kingston, New York. Currently, I am Chair of Global Science at Mares. But in my previous life, I worked with the New York City Department of Sanitation, Office of Resource Recovery and Waste of Social Planning. Garbage is in my blood. It's also in my heritage. My grandfather was a waste paper dealer. You've had that. So, may I propose that both resolutions, well, 2445 is really not ready for prime time. What is the position of the County Recycling Oversight Committee? Have we heard this yet? If we are going, if you're discontinuing a single stream, what are you proposing as an alternative? I like Jim's proposal as to source separate, which is an excellent way to go, but you also need to have the end market, right? You need to have a way to deal with whether or not it's glass or paper. What are you going to do with it? You need to have that type of market. And unfortunately, about 35 years ago, we stopped thinking about R and D for developing those markets. So, what is, my question is, what is your proposed alternative to single stream? And then another one that is really near and dear to me, as citizens, we have a responsibility. We could source separate. We could also do that, that first thing on those recycle triangles is reduce. So, do we, do you have a proposal that you're putting forward to reduce our waste stream? The bottle bill back in 1983 actually reduced New York City's waste stream by 15 percent. And New York City's waste stream at that point was about 22,000 tons of municipal solid waste, that's the garbage you and I make every single day that had to be disposed of. That's a lot of garbage. And so, 15 percent was a big deal of that. So, where are your proposals to reduce our waste stream? And I think that's number one. So, if you'd like me to talk on the tipping fee, I will do so, otherwise I'll go over there. So, again, I think that the tipping fee, we don't have all the information in front of us. What is the proposal? How is it going to affect both the environment and our financial environment with the tipping fee? So, I do not see any of that in any of the documents put forward. So, I'd like those answers. But thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Brian Wolken.
Good afternoon, and thank you for scheduling this hearing. And if I can just say, I was at the side, Mr. Watanola, you look very good sitting in that chair. Anyway, good evening. Single stream, overall, the Ulster County Resource Recovery Agency's handling of single-stream recycling has been profitable for the agency. Only the last five months since the advent and the impact of natural assortment effect that's been felt, is that this material has shifted, there's been a shift in the market where the RRA's begun, of the RRA's handling of single-stream recycling has proven to be a loss. To many people, the proposed shift in UC RRA policy related to single-stream recyclables is too sudden and too severe for the client agencies to make reasonable mid-year adjustments. So, I ask you to please consider postponing your resolutions 2445 and 2446 until at least January 1st, 2019, and in the inter-meeting time period to collaborate with your client agencies in developing a long-term workable plan which will benefit everyone, particularly our residents and our businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Yendi Weiss.
Bartzak.
I hope I said it right.
Annie Weiss Bartzak, 142 Brinsworth Road in Gordon. Thinking for myself, for my town. I like the proposal of the first speaker. I still separate my recyclables, and then I have to take them out and dump them together, which hurts, because you have the water going on the paper, or the liquids going on the paper, so it ruins them, I expect. So, I would like to have this separate again, because I think that leads to a higher return on our recyclables, at least on the paper recyclables. I think we need to let people know about the financial aspects. Will we pay more money when we have clean paper and coated cardboard? And we need education to let the people know why they need to separate. The financial, the moral, because we need to think about why we need to not dump everything for our children, grandchildren, and environmental, of course, what happens. And we need to reduce it. Somebody has said, let people know that the best way is to reduce the amount of recyclables as well as garbage. And I think businesses need to notice, they are, I read about a lot of businesses and residents who are doing that, and let the residents know that this is what we want to have done. And also to, I know the county is also looking around for how to reduce its garbage and recyclables, but get people thinking about this, is it overpackaged? The cap on the bottle, is that recyclable? Those little plastic bits that you pull apart to get a part in there, cannot be recycled? So, we really need to be thinking about minimizing what we have to fuss around, and also looking at the markets, as somebody pointed out. We should be, are you using paper made from previously used paper and so forth, so that we help make the market? And the county and businesses are the ones that can do that. So, I'm in favor of as soon as possible, get those four trucks going, and let's go back to separate. And if people are a little bit lazy about doing it, well, let's encourage them and help them to do their civic duty, which is to separate recyclables to maximize the money that we can get back from these recyclables. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Mayor Noble.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Thank you to the rest of the Board members for scheduling this public hearing. I also want to thank you for allowing us to have that informational session a few weeks ago. I thought that was very interesting to hear your perspective on this matter. I do want to say that first, my name is Steve Noble, Mayor of City of Kingston, here representing the City of Kingston, and I also live at 101 Wilson Avenue here in Kingston. I could come before you this evening to talk about how the City of Kingston began its single-stream operation. I could talk to you about how the Research Recovery Agency blessed the City of Kingston's transition to single-stream recycling. I could talk to you this evening about how much money the city has spent with both local funds and state grant dollars purchasing recycling bins for the City of Kingston residents. I could also talk to you at length about the amount of money spent on mechanizing our equipment to be able to have these single-stream, you know, recycling trucks that we purchased with state dollars. I could also speak to you this evening about how our recycling rates have almost doubled in the City of Kingston since we implemented this new recycling program. But in five minutes, I can't do that. I also believe that I can't do that in the month and a half that we've been able to, you know, be able to do this.
Mayor, we'll give you more time.
It's okay. I mean, okay. I think that one of the issues that we all see about this issue is that it's complicated. This issue is something that, as you all have indicated, has, you know, been happening because of China. But I would say that, you know, the issue of recycling has been happening, you know, around our country and around New York for decades, trying to get people to recycle. And it has not been easy, and it's something that we've all struggled with, whether we're single-stream or dual-stream. People still don't know how to recycle correctly. People still put plastic bags in dual-stream recycling, just like they do in single-stream recycling. They still don't know where to put shredded paper, and whether it's can be recycled or it can't be recycled. And I think the same issue is here. This is an important decision. What do we charge? How do we manage it? Is it dual-stream? Is it single-stream? And I think that if the agency is shifting course and deciding, again, that dual-stream is the only way that Ulster County should operate, then that should be a public discussion, and it should involve the county legislature, it should involve the Recycling Oversight Committee, it should involve a whole lot more meetings like this, and it should involve the stakeholders that will be directly implemented and impacted by these decisions. It should include the large haulers like Waste Management and County Waste, and it should involve the residents of the City of Kingston that don't speak English. It should involve all of our residents, and the agency, I think, needs to step up and engage with our communities and really decide, you know, how can we build a better, more sustainable, and also more resilient recycling industry here in Ulster County? And there is no way that that can happen before December 31st of 2018, before the proposed switch that you're asking us to do. And I also think that, you know, we need to be able to spend that time working together to decide once and for all how we do this. As many of you know, it's taken the City of Kingston four years to completely implement single-stream recycling in just our residential neighborhoods. On Tuesdays, we still have dual-stream recycling for the most part on our business commercial runs here in the city. And so, we still haven't gone fully, you know, single-stream. And so, I do think that it's important that this decision not be made in haste. I think that the Board, no offense, has created a crisis and made this seem like a crisis, making it seem that our, our agency is stockpiling single-stream recycling, making it seem that we have no place to put it, making it seem that there is an emergency happening here in Ulster County, and it's just not true. And yes, we all recognize that the market is changing and that we have a huge issue that we all have to tackle together, but again, I don't believe it needs to be done in six months. I don't believe it needs to be done like this. And I think that I encourage all of you to consider that when you're deciding on how you are going to vote on these next two resolutions. And so, with that said, I just want to say thank you again for letting me speak this evening.
Thank you.
Finished?
Okay, Supervisor Quigley.
Jim Quigley, President of the Ulster County Supervisors Association and also Supervisor of the Town of Ulster. I've listened to the comments here. I did not intend to speak when I first came in the room, but I want to acknowledge there was a proposal for an alternate collection system. There exists in the towns, and could exist in the city, because they have a transfer station also, an alternate means of collection of recyclable materials if the consumer chooses to separate, and I stress chooses, because as the other speakers have stressed, this is a matter that starts at the source and requires a commitment of the individuals participating in the system to make it work. The towns at the present time maintain transfer stations, and effective August 1st, I believe, every single town that has a transfer station will be offering separated collection of recyclable materials. I would offer that the citizens of Ulster County have the opportunities, if they live in the towns, to go to their transfer stations, to deposit the materials in the proper bins the proper manner, and yes, it requires a commitment on the part of the individuals. Other than that, if they want the convenience, as so many of our individuals in this world today want, they should be able to afford it, to pay for it. With that being said, I look at the two resolutions being offered today. I listened to Mayor Noble. I also listened to the arguments that were made from last week's Environmental Commission meeting, and make the following proposal, that the RRA suspend consideration of the suspension of accepting single-stream recycled materials, but price it according to the market, and go forward under the auspices, as Mayor Noble has laid out, for a full discussion on recycling. I understand it's unfair to the RRA to ask them to accept the financial burden of a few people who choose not to recycle and those that can't recycle, and push it back on all the taxpayers and all the users in Ulster County. So, with that being said, a market price fee for the disposal of single-stream for those municipalities or trash haulers who choose to continue to offer single-stream, that's an appropriate market-based decision and opportunity. And as to those citizens who wish to separate and make the commitment, I'll be the first to discuss with the supervisors, because I know it's true in the Town of Ulster, you do not need a permit to dispose of recyclables. You do not pay a fee for disposal of recyclables. And I'm pretty certain that is the standard policy amongst all the transfer stations throughout the county. There exists an alternate means of collection, but it requires a commitment. Thank you.
Thank you. Legislature Penney.
Thank you for having me here. Like Supervisor Quigley, I wasn't going to speak, but there's been some very good points that have been brought up. First of all, we never should have gone single-stream. I think that was our first mistake. We were trying to help the haulers. We thought that it would bring in more recycling, and it did bring in more. However, it's not recycling. My background, at least the last 30 years, has been in garbage. There's been interesting trends, and yes, everybody wants to make it much simpler and easier, so they thought the single-stream would be the way to go. So, a couple of good points that have come up. First of all, our municipality in New Pauls does charge. You do need a permit to come in. I spoke to another supervisor yesterday. The trend that we're seeing is much more recycling is trying, they're trying to bring into the recycling centers. This particular township had three pulls a week, I believe, they told me, of cardboard. We've actually put restrictions on what we're allowing people to bring in, and that is up to one yard of cardboard. We're having trucks come in. We had a box truck come in. It had 12 yards. We've had people come in with mixed commingled, a two-yard pickup truck with a four-yard trailer. We can't handle that as a township. So, I think that the potential is there to bring in clean recycling, and that's going to be marketing and other locations for residents or businesses, the smaller ones, to drop off their material. I think that will significantly help your MRF and bringing in the revenues. I also agree with Supervisor Quigley about giving people the option. Pass along that single-string cost. It should be your market cost for disposal plus a user fee. You know, if it's $70 and you have to charge a $15 user fee, well, then that's the cost of not being willing to separate your recycling. But then the towns are open, even though we do have a maximum that they can bring in at one time, they are open to take in that dual-string and bring in a nicer product. So, I think you do have some options here. However, one other concern is the significant investment that has been made by organizations and municipalities to take single-string, and that's why I'm asking that you do take a more in-depth look at other possibilities before you totally cut off the single-string in the MRF. For instance, the SUNY New Pauls campus just invested $53,000 into new single-stream collection equipment, you know, in addition to the City of Kingston becoming single-stream. So, you have options there. I just don't think six months is long enough. Let this, this new trend start to happen. I think people are becoming more involved, and let's give them other options to bring in this nice clean material before we just start saying, okay, single-string, that's it, because I don't know where it's going to end up. I honestly think more of it will end up in the garbage. But thank you again for letting me speak.
Thank you. Does anyone else would like to speak? Legislature Green.
Thank you. I also came mainly to listen, and it's a day and a half before revival, so I'm a great Hudson River revival. I really have other things on my mind, but I didn't want to miss hearing this conversation. My recommendation is that we reactivate the Solid Waste Management Improvement Committee or the Recycling Oversight Committee or something similar that meets on a regular basis. It can't be just that you have this public hearing and take in action. And although the agency has a lot of responsibility for this decision, it's going to affect the whole county. I don't think the circumstances that we're seeing are going to change anytime soon. I would have, and I believe I probably actively did, advise against single-stream. There's a big difference between having to sort three colors of glass and several kinds of paper and into a paper stream and a commingled stream, and I think there's a big difference in its marketability. But how to get from where we are now to where we need to be into the future, and also, I think it's really important to take into consideration especially the large generators of food-based composting. We have some facilities, but we barely scratch the surface in terms of what is, what the potential for food-based diversion is. So, I think there's a lot of work to be done, and I see the Board as being responsible for running the agency in the most appropriate and most efficient way possible. But I think that the planning process needs to include all the stakeholders that are So I think you do have some options here. However, one other concern is the significant investment that has been made by organizations and municipalities to take single-stream, and that's why I'm asking that you do take a more in-depth look at other possibilities before you totally cut off the single-stream in the MRF. For instance, SUNY New Pauls campus just invested $53,000 into new single-stream collection equipment, in addition to the City of Kingston becoming single-stream. So you have options there. I just don't think six months is long enough. Let, let this, this new trend start to happen. I think people are becoming more involved, and let's give them other options to bring in this nice clean material before we just start saying, okay, single-stream, that's it, because I don't know where it's going to end up. I honestly think more of it will end up in the garbage. But thank you again for letting me speak.
Thank you. Does anyone else would like to speak? Legislature Green.
I also came mainly to listen, and it's a day and a half before revival, so I'm a great Hudson River Revival, I really have other things on my mind, but I didn't want to miss hearing this conversation. My recommendation is that we reactivate the Solid Waste Management Improvement Committee or the Recycling Oversight Committee or something similar that meets on a regular basis. It can't be just that you have this public hearing and take an action. And although the agency has a lot of responsibility for this decision, it's going to affect the whole county. I don't think the circumstances that we're seeing are going to change anytime soon. I would have, and I believe I probably actively did, advise against single-stream. There's a big difference between having to sort three colors of glass and several kinds of paper and into a paper stream and a commingled stream, and I think there's a big difference in its marketability. But how to get from where we are now to where we need to be into the future? And also, I think it's really important to take into consideration, especially the large generators of food waste composting. We, we have some facilities, but we barely scratch the surface in terms of what is, what the potential for food waste diversion is. So I think there's a lot of work to be done, and I see the Board as being responsible for running the agency in the most appropriate and most efficient way possible. But I think that the planning process needs to include all the stakeholders that are going to be impacted. So I don't know whether, you know, this, I think reactivating the Recycling Oversight Committee, which in the past really focused on adding new materials, now we've done so well with recycling, we're diverting so much of the, of the recyclable waste stream that we've essentially exhausted the markets, we've certainly exhausted the domestic markets, and I think that's another thing, I've mentioned this before, but I'll reiterate it until it happens, and that is, you know, we give out IDAs for a whole lot of reasons. I don't see us developing an IDA or some real incentive for processing capability here in Ulster County or here in New York, so that we're not dependent on decisions, you know, from foreign markets. So those are my comments, and I would be willing to put the time and whatever somewhat dated expertise I have toward a process, toward facilitating a process that would really work for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else still would like to speak? Okay, I'll accept the motion to close the public hearing. Motion made, seconded.
Seconded.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I want your can motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Thank you all for coming, and thank you for your comments.